We'll commence with the roll call for attendance. Council President Chief.
Present.
Councillor Franken.
Present.
Councillor Hayes.
Present.
Councillor Martin.
Here.
Councillor McGinnis.
Here.
And Mayor McNeely is present. The Consent Agenda is a tool used to streamline meeting procedures by collecting routine, non-controversial items into a group whereby all are passed with a single motion and vote. You have before you the Consent Agenda on the approval of the meeting minutes for council workshop on Wednesday, March 8, 2023, council meeting on Wednesday, March 8, 2023, and the March 2023 check register. The minutes of the previous meetings and check register were distributed beforehand. Are there any issues or concerns with these documents? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Oh, second.
It is moved in seconded. We'll now report councillor's vote. Councillor President Chief.
Yes.
Councillor Franken.
Yes.
Councillor Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Presentations, guests, and announcements. I'm really excited about this next item. The Chair recognizes Superintendent Emerson, who will share with us employee recognitions.
Thank you, Mayor, to the council, to the chairman. So, yes, I'd like to bring up three employees and about to pull their promotions to give them more recognition. First, we got Rob Beerly coming up, and then Logan Romig and Caleb Smith. Say a little something about each of them, so bear with me. First, we got Rob Beerly. He's been with us for over nine years. I'm sure most of you know him. He takes care of the parks, streets, bowling, and does yard runs every day. As always, he has a great attitude and is the reason we continue to keep getting cookies delivered. Second is Logan Romig. He's been with us for over eight years. We joke about it at times, but Logan is our arms and legs. Logan takes care of anything we need him to, but if you notice an employee running, it's him. He can do just about anything in a half an hour. He does a lot for us, and I'm proud to be his boss. Next, Caleb Smith. He's been with us for two years, and if it was up to me, he would be the operator of the year. Caleb Smith has had to fill some big shoes. He's taken over a sampling program for both the water and wastewater. He is also a public works liaison for the safety committee. He operates both treatment plants, and on top of that, he is a volunteer firefighter. And as a reminder, in October of 2021, the Oregon Health Department established Rockaway Beach Public Water System as an outstanding performer. I can promise you it takes a team to achieve this level from the state. We're very proud of their accomplishment. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Emerson, and thanks to the three gentlemen. We really appreciate all the hard work that they put into the city. The Chair recognizes John Paul Bowles for an update on the Salmonberry Trail project. Please hold your comments and questions until the end of the presentation.
It's good to be back with you guys. My goal for today is to give an update on the work underway and also talk through the landscape assessment, which was added onto the scope, and the implications from that and how it informs our approach moving forward. So, I'll talk about the three areas of the project: the overall coordination of project management, community engagement, and the external stakeholders who will have influence on the path design. Well, I'll just start talking. A quick overview about this project for those of you who haven't heard as much about it. I know a lot of you have. This is a pedestrian and cycling path design project that will start at Washington Street and go to Beach Street. And this is part of the broader effort of the Salmonberry Trail, but I think there is a lot of utility for this path or Rockaway in and of itself, and it's part that we have some influence over right now. So, I think it's worth talking about in terms of this broader initiative, but also discreetly for the short term. If and when completed, the entirety of the Salmonberry Trail would go from Quagmire Loop in Toma to Banks for Nodia Trailhead in town. That's a huge undertaking, and as you guys know, the timeline has been considerable already. Initial concept plan was developed in 2013. It was 2007, but the rail line washed out, and the decision was made to not use it for a short rail in the game to the city. I also wanted to mention again the Safe Route to School Ward for this McDonald. Another planning work by the city, so this is nested within a lot of work that you guys have done throughout the years: downtown planning, transportation, and even other trail initiatives like the Orient Coast Trail, which this section will be a part of eventually, as well as Orient Coast by Drive. For those of you who don't know me or haven't seen me, my name is John Paul. I'm with Orient Nodia, and I have a small consulting business that focuses on helping tourism to go to residence. I work a lot in destination management, just to say tourism, whether it be good or bad, it should serve residents on how it evolves. And that is at the center of my work and a big part of this project. And so, my kiddos there, just to produce some credentials, this is walking on the beach here in town before I was working on this project and the inventory kind of up the picture. So, I'll do a quick review of these three areas, and if you're able to see, you guys may have had a chance to see some of these. And I'm happy to talk in more detail about them all. The landscape assessment was an addition that was requested by councillor and the mayor when we started this project, and now it's a very prudent decision recommendation. What it's done is allowed us to give an update on the project on the technical side. The funds for this project are being administered by ODOT, and so we needed to give an update on what the timeline constraints were, and that's really informed our approach. That process is for the delay we're hearing late summer for the initiation of technical design. I see that as opportunity, and so I'll talk through in the next few, or after the next few slides, ways that we can make slight adjustments to our work in order to best take advantage of the timeline. It's been incredibly advantageous that the city has very clear priorities for this project. Traditionally, that's something that's established early on, so it's been very helpful and expedited the project to have really clear communication mandates from the city manager, and informed by previous plans and leadership. And so, that's really helping us frame the design elements that are critical to the city, and throughout the community engagement process will be valuable. And the priorities that I've heard are, you know, making sure that the path serves local businesses. This is a path to Rockaway, not a path through Rockaway, and I'm lifting it out of line. And then it directs people to businesses. It gives you a reason to stop in town at a commercial district and increase connectivity. Another is increased connectivity to other assets, and this serves also the idea of this being a path to Rockaway and not a loop. So, from this approximately two-mile stretch of path, you'll be able to access the boardwalk in the new park, parking on Anchor Street, Lake Lidle, City Park, up to Manhattan Beach Recreation Area. So, there's a tremendous opportunity to have additional parking for folks who will be using the trail and increase time in town, particularly for pedestrians and cyclists. And I think in particular for folks who are staying in hotels and short-term rentals, who have the opportunity to just leave their car parked, walk a block or two up, and then move yourself on the path. So, that is a great opportunity to reduce congestion. And instead of there being such a cluster of congestion at the wayside, there'd be an opportunity, for example, for folks to park at Manhattan Beach area and then have a nice walk, stroll, maybe accessible, stroll or accessible, bikeable trip into town. Certainly back to the external timelines and constraints for this project. We are in preliminary design right now, and it's very advantageous to start that. Basically, it's going to let us frame this project with the city and residents priorities. And the overlap between those is very good, you know, relative to projects of this scale, to a lot of places. The constraint here on the ODOT delay is that the 2024 funding cycle is not delayed. So, we have a sweep of projects or design that were awarded in '22, '21, '22 that are basically locked in. There's a lot of federal money came in. ODOT has to administer it. Staff is challenging for everyone, so there's a bottleneck there. The opportunity that I see to Rockaway is to lay the groundwork for an expedited technical time when they are ready to make sure that this project is through an eligible construction. I would be surprised if all of the planning projects that were funded and are being held up now meet that threshold in time for construction funding. So, I want to really clearly communicate that, I think, the foresight that the city has in doing this work now, and that I do think it is competitive advantage in this upcoming funding cycle. And as a reminder, we'll go from approximately $40 million in 2024 for construction funding, and this is external dollars largely to the city, to about $6 million. So, timing is essential. We're racing a 2024 construction application deadline. One of the other big findings from the landscape assessment is decision-making hierarchy on design for any infrastructure within the railway. Of course, the Port of Toma Bay is the landowner and the Salmonberry chairman of the governmental agency, and the Orient Coast City of Cora, local leases for this section of rail right of way. And then will be implications on final decision-making authority and how that influences, you know, the plans and essentially the lease agreements that are already in place. So, I'll talk a little bit more about patients, but obviously, we are shifting some resource and focus to those relationships, and we'll get clarity on who makes what decision and how those are brokered, essentially the chair. For the engagement, I want to reiterate the message that you all gave me starting this project, that accountability and transparency is of the utmost importance. And so, for community engagement, that is top of mind in everything that we're asking. Uh, and so uh, for community engagement that is top of mind and everything that we're executing. Um, the engagement started with conversations with many of you and the business community. Uh, and we'll also include a conversation with the planning council as well. And that lays a foundation for the broader community outreach that um, happens more in earnest later this month. Kicking off with an April 26th info and listening session. And then a lot more of that general broader public engagement uh, over the next couple of months. Basically, we're making sure that the project, the messaging, the parameters that we're setting, broader community engagement is well embedded through leadership, existing plans, planning council, um, and the business, the business group. Through some of the findings with the external stakeholders already, again, this is an area that we're going to put more attention and uh, have conversations around what the parameters are within the Radway. Essentially, we have a pretty restricted space with aspirations for cycling, walking, city coro, parking. There, there are going to be some negotiations and some considerations. And knowing who makes uh, final decisions and how those are all way is really essential to making sure that the project is forwarded in a way that meets the city's criteria and what we're hearing from residents throughout the community engagement process. I tipped my hand and talked about a lot of these opportunities already. Um, but we will of course continue staple engagement and go a lot deeper and wider on that. Um, I have heard what everyone told me out here that party is uh, the main consideration and concern and that's understandable. The, the big opportunity is to continue to do this work and especially given the head start we have based on the city's good work around priorities. Um, is to basically take some guidelines to the technical planning process, which will expedite it. Say here are the priorities for the city. There might be a conversation for a line in the sand around what is negotiable and what's non-negotiable, given the other stakeholders uh, at play. But doing that work ahead of time will tighten the conversation and the inputs that are gathered through technical design. And frame the whole project with a city that priorities. So obviously we talked about clarifying that decision-making hierarchy and the goal of laying the groundwork in this preliminary design phase. So that technical design, when it does begin through ODOT in late summer is well bound. And they have the inputs they need to have a pretty tight process that runs on a good timeline and helps meet that goal for uh, construction funding. Some of the immediate next steps. Uh, oh, well, I, I guess I missed some of the work that we've done, uh, as well as a project page up on the city website. Um, we have this flyer for the event on the 26th, um, which I would love all of you to help get the word out. And we'll set uh, future dates for additional sessions as well. Um, the city page will have an online feedback form for residents to get input if they can't make a session or aren't enough a group presentation or one-on-one meeting. There's still an opportunity to provide any, but um, and we'll continue to document the conversations that we're having. So we have that list of folks we talked to. And a well documented process that is shared for Transcamp and C and kind of those that you guys set up on the site. A great conversation with the Workers Association on Monday. Thank you. And is scheduled to meet in the chamber soon. We'll follow the planning mission uh, prior to the 26th date to remove much broader public. And then we'll be focusing increasingly on the, uh, the port, the railroad and the Salmonberry Trail and the Governmental Agency to clarify uh, who's on first for what and how those conversations run. Which will of course parallel what we hear from the city and residents. And then the future will be care with the engineering work that says what is feasible, given the actual physical constraints, technical strengths of the area. This is a very preliminary map um, that will be uh, used in the April 26th session. I want to be really clear that this is not the proposal for where a path will go. It's nothing that is set in stone. It should say draft and writing letters on it. This is the, this is what um, is being shared here first right now will be shared ongoing throughout community engagement that people can react to. It's going to have a lot of notes on it. It will have some changes. This version is based off of the uh, most recent planning work that was done and that was 2017, uh, that post-seven report. And it's a pretty high level, pretty high level line on the map. Uh, so there's a lot of that to be done. Again, not set in stone, not a given, a point of the project or a conversation. Uh, I'd like to point out just a couple of uh, elements and ways that we've attempted to capture the city's priorities. Um, one is by showing the connectivity to other uh, assets, uh, other places that people want to stop and go uh, while they're in town. Natural attractions. What we're trying to show here is optionality. Um, this is pretty clear that between third south and third north is where the slow conversation is kind of on the pole. That's where, you know, that's where the constraints are tightest and they're the most interest in play. Um, so making sure that it is easy for folks to get to businesses both east and west of 101. Uh, and then increased connectivity is another of the city priorities and mandates, which is very prudent. So that where we are leading to these other assets are safe crossings along 101. Which is also going to open up more access to beach and recreation sites for visitors and residents. Let's see. Another one of the priorities uh, that I heard from the city that was very clear is being able to access the Crescent Creek Bridge in order to get out debris that can flood residential areas on it. Um, I think the city is doing an exceptional job in reflecting what I've heard so far in conversations with residents and the needs of the community. So I'm happy to talk about um, any of the, the elements of this or strategy or, or anything you guys would like to. So I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Council?
Well, and, and I probably have said this before, but the city's been working on this for about four years. Carrie Michael, when she was the uh, city manager, she started it and she asked myself and then someone else from the planning commission to attend all the Salmonberry Trail board meetings and, and raise Rockaway as an ish, as something. And then Luke, uh, city manager Shepherd took over as when he became city manager and he continued that. And um, and as a result of the city putting all the work in that you said, we are the first segment from Tillamook to, Tillamook is a little tiny part of theirs, but not the whole thing. From Tillamook to Banks, uh, that will complete their first, the segment first. And I think that gives us an opportunity to be creative because we don't have to follow what other people are doing necessarily. We're creating the design since we're first. And I, I, I think that's due to all the hard work that everyone in City Hall has done.
I, I agree. I can give a reflex very well on the city to be first to market essentially with something like this. And I'd say that that, that I think that that is as relevant thinking of it as just Rockaway portion as the 87 mile stretch. Because the implications for having this type of connectivity in town for a community like Rockaway are enormous. Even if it doesn't have an additional 85 miles of connectivity.
As I, as I understand it, you're going to be speaking to certain groups of, of Chamber of Commerce and, and the
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Are you going to have an open house for the public?
Yes, absolutely. The, the first open house will be on April 26th. And then we will set uh, dates for at least one more in May. And then make a decision in the not too distant future about whether we have a third that is general or if we try to have a third that reflects some of the, some potential revisions to the map that is a little bit more specific on particular design elements I would anticipate again between 30.
Thank you.
So April 26th, 6 to 8 here at City Council. All of you, your assignment is, as able, you've scheduled permits, show up here at 6:00 PM and spread the word. We'll do other things to spread the word, but spread the word. This needs to be, should be, must be a, a community conversation so that we do create something that everybody can embrace and enjoy and, and, and love.
Thank you. Absolutely. And we have a flyer to share. I think you guys have PDF version of that. And I think that we may have to, uh, settle maybe the process of, well, not outside of the, oh, that's great. Thank you. We've got a flyer up on the construction thing. Uh, all right. So also I want to note that the 26th will be the only opportunity. Again, if you're on my forms contacting me, um, future information sessions and a series of presentations and the conversations between now and the end.
I want to give a pitch for the businesses, not just in the downtown corridors, but um, it's especially important that we connect folks like the upper crust or Wash to Shore who doesn't have, they don't have proper sidewalks. And so already they're kind of alienated from traffic. And so um, the downtown is very important for me. The caboose is very important, but those folks are just as important or even more important because they don't already have the foot traffic unless somebody's cruising on the railroad tracks, right? And so um, I want to advocate for those folks and I, and, and I love the um, the school, what did you say? Safer route to schools. Yeah. And so the young people actually pointed that out in your proposal and my last. And so that's really cool. Um, because they do walk back and forth and, and Neokanee is our biggest employer in North Camp. Neokanee School District is our biggest employer. And so we want to take care of them to, you know, include them. I didn't understand it was past the high school and it sounds like we're going all the way to Manhattan Beach.
What the, 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 uh, the intent is to have the northern terminus at Beach Street. So that's a good point. But Manhattan concerns visitors and congestion, but also anyone who needs access to school or town from Manhattan Beach or Madonna has, has that access.
Yeah, that's cool.
That was, uh, that was an addition that city manager.
That makes me really happy. I really love.
Thank you for that, city manager. Uh, and also I think it not only goes into the long planning that the city has done on this, but 10 years ago, the city vetted and created a transportation plan, a long-term strategic transportation plan, which is actually on our, our website. And in that transportation plan, it specifically says to create a paved walking, biking trail that connects north into town to the south into town. So we have slowly been chipping away at that long-range strategic plan for, for a long time and are making it come to reality. And, and again, it's just deep planning on the part of the city.
And also I just want to, you know, mention for the record here. The, the, the Salmonberry Trail as an, as an effort, I think, has largely been talked about in recreational terms. Um, it's a phenomenal potential recreational opportunity as a, as an 87 mile trail. In reality, this is an active transportation project. So, you know, I think there, there's maybe a perception that the trail's work is kind of in one bucket and that should happen more quickly and doesn't cost as much or require so much. But if you're in the world of ODOT, transportation planning, paved surfaces, active transportation is the, you know, ODOT nomenclature for this project. It's actually appropriate and makes sense that we have these longer timelines and need planning and master transportation plans that have been in motion for, you know, for 10 years plus. That is the norm within the transportation context.
And I want to give a shout out to city manager Shepherd. He's the one who uh, primarily wrote the original grant to get this going and, and has really pushed this forward. So thank you very much, city manager Shepherd.
Thank you. And uh, John Paul helped with that one, actually.
Oh, thank you, John Paul.
So I have a question. Are we going to learn the jobs with the stakeholders in terms of getting negotiations and then delays and getting responses and getting cooperation? Well, I'm glad we're starting now because if technical design was starting now as well, I, I, I think looking at the ODOT reality, yes, less than status is the best way to frame this. You guys, you know, I, I don't think any of us know exactly what those conversations will entail and, and who's on first for them. We know that the board is at the top. Um, so I'm glad that we had the opportunity to, to be working on that now, um, for that technical design process. And we'll know what parameters and constraints we have to deal with going into the engineering side.
I wouldn't hope not because they talked us into having the Brown's Berry corridor meetings. Like they started this whole thing. They, we had our first meetings here 15 years ago about all of it actually. So they, they, they started the conversation and got us going.
Absolutely. And the, you know, the, the purpose of the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency and its support in the D, the Salmonberry Trail Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) is to, to help bring the, the Salmonberry Trail to life. So we have the, the right partners to talk to. Um, you know, obviously both the Salmonberry group having leased and the coro having leased. Uh, we'll leave with some conversations around the, the reality is I, I think before I say that, by and large, I mean, looking at projects like this as zero-sum trade-offs isn't generally the right perspective because there's more nuance and layer to it than that. At the same time, it's important to acknowledge you've got a limited space on the right way, particularly in town. And it's just physically not possible to have as much parking, pedestrian and cycling path, additional row, you know, an additional rail line to switch. So there's going to be some conversation and negotiation there. And, and of course, a lot of that will be with the city coro. I think one of the, the best roles that I hope to see from the Salmonberry group uh, is to be helping leading those conversations about which, which interests and uses will have priority. Another thing about uh, that uh, Councilwoman Guinness mentioned about basically Rockaway being the first community is that we get to deal with the problems that we'll solve and the other communities won't have to. And this is an example, right? This will, this process will help create a template, a formula for how conversations between the board and the shareholders negotiate the agreement between cities, in this case, Rockaway and the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency about maintaining the trail. So it's good to be first. It's good to be innovative. It means you got to solve more problems.
But, but I, I see it as a huge advantage for us.
Undoubtedly.
Rather than following behind and being stuck with something that got created before us.
Absolutely. And I think there's also the, the clarity of priorities is also a huge advantage because that won't be the norm necessarily in, in other communities. And so really setting a precedent that local voices need to be front and center in the design process is, is very important, I think, for the effort overall. And certainly my, one of my top priorities and mandates here.
And you will find we have a very engaged community that wants to, to jump in and solve problems and work with whatever we're doing. So.
It's going to be incredibly positive experience for me so far in conversations with you all, the Workers Association and others. So go forward with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Appreciate it. Another stellar presentation.
Oh, we have one question.
Oh, um, yes.
In my experience going to City Council meetings, that's where I was just everywhere. Materials can become a real issue. Evidence in projects accomplished. And the wrong materials you use can have to be ripped out and redone. So I know you mentioned it in the original. But are you also giving recognition to the appropriate work, software and, you know, and when?
Uh, yes, most of that will be part of the engineering and technical design base, um, because of the, the capacity that ODOT and then the other technical folks that they bring on will have to look at things like soil type, implosion, what happens for compaction and things that are more in that technical design that frankly I'd be over my skis on. So we're setting them up to do that, that work well. But also in terms of this being innovative and, and other conversations that I've had, they're looking potentially at alternative material types that are suitable for this community and might be for others. I mean, that's another opportunity that we have. So it's not necessarily just, you know, what type of surface will it be? Should it be? How much room uh, is there in that? What would the budget implications be? So we can tee those things up to hand off to the engineering team. And I think we should for, uh, like you said, you know, the specific coastal environment. Fortunately, we have ODOT region to staff that are very familiar with this geography and climate. So they're, they're well versed in this. Fortunately, we have ODOT region two staff that are very familiar with this geography and climate. So they're, they're well versed in those things. But in my experience, uh, it can be useful, helpful, beneficial to take a couple of options or a range of options and then let the engineers kind of crunch numbers and go with it to see what the cost implications are in the long term.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Let's move on to our staff reports. The Chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Hesse. Run a roll, please.
Okay, so Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Rockaway Beach. Uh, you have for you the staff report for our department this month of March of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'll start with something that's not written down yet. Uh, I have to say that last Saturday at noon, uh, we had an appearance by the Easter event. And even though it was raining sideways, which I know the park will leave the Rockaway, at least it wasn't snowing or, uh, anyway. Yeah, we had a tremendous turnout. Um, we had, I, I, I don't know, we should have counted or keep some better stats, but probably a couple hundred kids from, they were twelve and four thousand East grades. And it was a huge, successful event. They braved the weather and still showed up. So shout out to the volunteers that may be sitting in the audience that helped out with that too. Uh, but it went well. Side side. So you have for, we had fifty-eight events during the month of March, nine-one-one calls. You notice are a little down from last month. We had twenty-seven nine-one-one calls. Twenty-five of those were medical, so it still leads the, the charge. And we had a, a structured fire in Rockaway and then we mutated with an A-one-one to start the fire last month. So that was the only nine-one-one call we had. A little, little slower than February. Um, trainings, we had ten. We're still working hard with, uh, basic fire tech sizing up. We had nine-one-one, one of their, uh, dispatches came out, kind of working back and forth on procedures, what's changed at nine-one-one, and how we can better serve them and how they can better serve us. Uh, we did break in that flashover trailer on Saturday in March. And, uh, we, we were gonna do two days, but day two was extremely, the weather forecast was horrible. So we stayed a little late on the first day and got all the training in. Uh, what a great tool. And we're gonna have some more events. We're gonna have some open houses. We'll give everybody an opportunity to see how that works. But it worked very well. And EMT class, which I actually have the notes in a minute and I'll, I'll talk about it. Um, and then non-emergent. We're seeing a lot more visitors on the beach. Spring break, obviously saw influx of tourists and locals alike. But we were on the beach eleven times last month and talking to people and interacting about safety. Uh, six burn complaints last month, and I really think it's very early. March is very early to start getting burn complaints. But we're responding to them and taking care of them. And then, uh, so year-to-date, the numbers down below there, if you notice, it's really interesting. We had a hundred and seven, uh, year-to-date, a hundred and seven nine-one-one calls the same time last year. This year we're at a hundred and five. So we're off two call. I think we're kind of seeing a steady rate there. Non-emergent, forty-three and forty-seven. Trainings, thirty-three and thirty-four. So you're starting to see some pretty close numbers. And maybe we left off. I don't know. I, I kind of hope so because as they increase, that means more harm or more sick folks, and we don't like seeing that. So we like to see these trends go down. If the training update though, we focused a lot of it on, on energy company operations. We're trying to get better at first, quick getting water out of our river. Our, our goal, I don't think I've mentioned it this year, is move with purpose. That's our theme for the year. We're learning to move with purpose. Make sure every step we take, every action we take has a reason and we're not, not being slow. Um, I did bring up the EMT class though. I'd like to shout out to those folks that are sitting across the street right now. Wednesday night, they six to nine o'clock. Uh, they're over there. And then Saturday from nine to four, every Saturday, they've been there since January. They've given up every Saturday, every Wednesday. They're going to be in that classroom, a hundred and sixty-eight hours. Plus their study time, which is another at least a hundred and sixty-eight to, to pass the exam. But tonight they're over there scheduling their ride times. And ride times are, they have to have, uh, twelve hours at a fire department, twelve hours on an ambulance, and twelve hours in an emergency room. So it adds thirty-six more hours to their volunteer time, and they have to have it completed in about thirty days. So they're working full-time. They're volunteering at their local community. I, I'm real impressed with it. So I just thought I'd recognize them that way. Just think about the efforts they made. Um, like I said, beach safety, we've been busy. Uh, we even extinguished a couple flyers on the beach last month. I, which I thought was a little early for that, right?
He saw my look.
Yes, I saw your look. And you're right. It's like, really? I, I expect that in July, uh, but not so much in March. So we're seeing some earlier. I would just leave it to your own imagination. The next part is about work to prepareness. And there's several members in this room that have, that helped over this, but I gotta give a shout out to them too. So radio and the emergency preparedness have been working hard on a lot of different things behind the scenes. But this Saturday, uh, eleven, eleven to three, they have a preparedness for Neokani High School. And for those out in the public, uh, these in the audience and council members, I'd really encourage you to attend this event. There's been a lot of prep work and a lot of thought and consideration to how this is going to go. Uh, there's going to be booths from fire departments, Coast Guard, and, and they, and, and us as a preparedness group and a lot of information, and I mean a lot of information available. A lot of experts there. Uh, should be a, a great event. So I'm encouraging everybody to, to show up. I, I see this group being in a lot of purpose. We really started last May after COVID. We finally got fired up again. And then this year, I should be proud of the volunteers that put their time into that group. And, uh, again, we're moving forward. Um, we're going to be completing our SCBA grant this month. Our training is next Thursday. Uh, so we can actually try on from the expert that sold them to us, uh, all the safety features, make sure we're using correctly. But that is moving forward and we can't wait to get them in service. It really, we'll bring up, I'll bring them next month. I'll bring one in with one of my firefighters and demonstrate some of the, uh, new safety abilities. So, um, two other items that I need to ask City Manager. Would you like to make the Verizon update or would you like me to make the Verizon update?
You should make it. You should get the credit.
I should make a phone call. So there have been some concerns during recent power outages that the Verizon tower is not working. So I was tasked with the assignment to find out why, how it's going to, I made one phone call. Just happened to get ahold of the right person, uh, that didn't even have to help me. This gentleman was an engineer in the Midwest. We were there and I called and he says, how can I help you? And I told him, well, whenever the power goes out, our tower goes down. And lose our communications. I took this from a preparedness standpoint. And he says, um, let me see what I can find. Where are you located? I told him, I even had the tower number and some good data. I said, and by the way, you'll probably find out we're in New York. Sure enough, put me on hold. Two minutes later, come back, says, yep, uh, are you in New York, by, by me? No, no, wrong Rockaway. Oh, put me on hold again. And he says, well, you're from Springfield, Illinois or Missouri? I said, no coast though. And he took a few minutes and come back and says, yep, I found you. Good, we're here. And I'm going to paraphrase now, but he made some phone calls, put me on hold. I got to listen to some really great music for a while. But he come back, he's, and he updated me a couple times. Anyway, long for short, he brought the tech that actually worked on that tower on a three-way call. And we visited. And he basically, he told me that that tower was struck by lightning. And when it was struck by lightning, it blew out a circuit board. That is, believe it or not, backwards. But as soon as it is fixed and they get the part, he will repair it. So this, we do have backup power. We, it just, it's in delay because of parts. But it will be taken care of. I believe this gentleman I talked to, he knew Rockaway. He knew that tower, how to get to it. So I believe I actually talked with him first. So as soon as he gets a part, it will be operational. So that's the Verizon update. I thought it was good news that, that the citizens and council would enjoy that. And then last thing I have is, I've talked a little, a little bit in the past about ISO, the insurance services organization, and how we're rating on a point system from one to ten, ten being no fire protection, one being a Cadillac fire department. Uh, we're drawing a five, uh, which is not bad for a small community of, of volunteer background. We were last rated in two thousand and fifteen. I've been having conversations with the person that comes out and rates us. He will be out in July. And we're going to have a conversation of, of re-rating and the pre-work that needs to be done to see if it's worth going through. But the initial conversation I had was, yes, the improvements you've made already to that fire department in the last few years, uh, then we will have a better number. So I, I felt that was really good news. And, uh, that's all I have. I'd, uh, love to answer some questions.
Well, thank you for the contact with that Verizon.
Yeah, that good news.
That is, yeah.
You might mention that, that, that rating will bring down our, our homeowners.
Yeah, yeah, that, that rating, every time we get down a number, uh, reduces your homeowner's, uh, fire insurance. Yeah, so that'd be good. If we, we get it to one, your rates are very low. I think we're going to get there, but that, we definitely make an improvement.
You've done lots of work since we were at last time. Chief?
Yes.
I want to thank you for the good job you did on a fire that was up on Washington Street. I've heard feedback from several of the neighbors and they were very impressed on the firefighter fighters' abilities and the fact that they got there as soon as they did. And, uh, it was just nice to hear some good things said about our city. So thank you very much.
That's why we train hard every week. And I will pass out on that.
It pays off.
Isn't it? Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Chief Highsanty. The Chair recognizes Deputy Kevin Drogen to report on the Tillman County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, everyone. As we all know, a couple of weeks spring break there, quite a big population decrease. That kept us free, basically, for pretty much a whole month of March. Uh, that goes from handing out sneakers to children to helping tourists while ordering food to involving, uh, traffic stop services along that procedures. We had an incident last month where we discussed an individual in town that was using a quite a bit of references, uh, the fire department state offices. And the sheriff's office was made a resolution and the individual was taken to custody and is still currently in custody, bringing up our fire department to, uh, respond to better incidents of people at their time. Uh, also, Chief Highsanty mentioned the fire on Washington Street. Uh, we, it is currently under an investigation, working with other agencies and, uh, conducting multiple inquiries to find the ignition source and suspects involved. And then, uh, I mentioned this almost every single month, but the influx in deaths and entries into the water vehicles, we got to make sure we're locking order. It's getting more and more the closer we get to summer. And I will say it again, cameras, report, license plates, everything you see, uh, to a definitely, I mean, we're providing a good safety. I will like to say, uh, all the traffic stops we made, uh, pardon the language, so we're doing, doing better. As of right now, we have nine hundred and eighty-six train. So that's also great news. Uh, just a little bit of information to the department as well. Uh, we have a hit for individuals that are in the long process of the hiring. So that's looking great. Uh, the last count was five individuals who wanted backgrounds in psych exams. Uh, I will also be attending the Advanced Deputy Academy next week in Sun River to further help aid and buy a little bit to serve the city of Rockaway. April is also, uh, driver awareness month, avoided driver awareness month. So who have issued deputies working around the county looking for distracted drivers, cell phones, uh, Bluetooth distractions, stop on laps, all that good stuff. So we got to make sure we're paying attention to that. Uh, one other note that I would like to really recommend to talk about, although it happened at the beginning of this month, was, uh, incident of a property appliance that burned right through the high school. A group of five individuals, I mean, late teens, early twenties, that had a pretty severe accident, which could have been, uh, aborted by just a, uh, driver fell, sick the wheel, and his lucky date out of the bush. So I want to, if you're tired, pull over. I'm not going to deal with somebody who's asleep on the side of the road versus having to deal with their good phone call parents. So if you're feeling tired, pull over, you need to make a phone call, call over text. I recommend it. Uh, I think that's it. Any questions?
I have a question about the security cameras. Do you know if the sheriff's department participates in a program of giving, of, of helping with financial assistance to low-income people or senior citizens to get security cameras? Is, is, is there such a thing as that?
That I'm not aware of, but I can make a couple phone calls. Pretty easy to get anything from that. Um, it's just with, I highly recommend it because people get stuff to take off a porch where there'd be actives, uh, their child bike. And they call us and if we don't have the information, life's like description, it's really difficult to either retrieve the three product between the property and everything like that. So it's just, I, that's an easy question to figure out. So I'll come back to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, uh,
I'm curious about the policy is, um, do you guys have a policy for driving around neighborhood or locally?
So that's a tough one. I understand where, on that side of the road, being a local, seeing someone drive by your house, something that essentially roadways are open to public. You can't really make a stop unless they're behind, so.
No, I mean, as far as, I'm in, uh, some, um, kind of off the grid-ish and had a break in last couple of weeks ago. And we'd like to see someone drive by. When Sean and Chris were here, it happened at least once, twice a week. And I've seen no one. So we lost a lot of ways to park.
What's your address?
It's ten twenty-five South Third. That third street is really off the beaten path. And we, I haven't seen anyone honestly. And I've asked for that now and it hasn't happened. So I wonder if you have a policy that, you know, once a week, you could drive by there or just to drive by sometimes will help lower the thing. Another thing I want to say about cameras, so I just invested in a motion, has a motion sensor, a really good camera, and also audio that you do via phone. So if that trips off, you can speak. And it was less than two hundred dollars at Rosa Works, just FYI.
Thank you. Thank you. We need to get that particular statement, I think, in our minutes, maybe, so that people who see that will, will know that that's available.
Yeah, that's another great point. I've got a lot of people trying to reach the houses and they hear somebody who's talking to them.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. And that's two hundred dollars is worth that.
Yeah, because that saves everybody, whether it's your friend or home, I think it's all that stuff.
I did notice you got one call for fireworks. Uh, and so I just want to remind everybody, the detonation of fireworks in the Rockaway Beach is prohibited from July sixth into the next year, the end of June. So we have a very short, narrow window around the fourth of July where fireworks are allowed to be detonated in the city.
Yep, we may, sometimes it's hard to find one on the beach, but I could talk to people. So usually it's, um, pretty fast.
Thank you.
Yes? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Public Works Superintendent Dan Emerson. You're back to the podium, sir.
Hey, you're mayor, state council members, and manager, the chef. Uh, so it was very cold in early March. An outdoor pump that throws up on us, which is remarkable, but that's happened in the past. Public Works was forehanded in March with its grant, Rockaway Beach Intermodal Complex for Festas Water Orange. As well, Rockaway Beach nominee Taylor Smith having Water Operator of the Year and the Rookie Operator of the Year. I'm sorry to say we did not come home with any awards. We had custom trees down South Center at Seven and Miller, Union Gardens, Lake Live, Post Picture Park, brush was cut on the hill and Coral Street. May of last year, Public Works requested ODOT to do a study in Rockaway Beach, discovered from about South Six to the high school. Draft reports, uh, draft reports, our results came back from ODOT Traffic Investigator. It is his recommendation that thirty mile, thirty mile per hour speed zone downtown be extended to North Second. I want to stress the fact that this is just his recommendation, not the final. I want to stress the fact that this is just his recommendation, not final. The next step is review and approval by the State Traffic Engineer Office. Rockaway Beach has three projects in April. The first is, uh, Oregon Coast, Seafaree, and Rockaway Beach will be upgrading the railroad crossing at First Street. This is scheduled to start April seventeenth and finish the twenty-first. Uh, you will continue to see Oregon Coast Seafaree working as they plan to replace the tracks, uh, towards North Third. After the twenty-first, Rockaway Beach will, uh, tie the asphalt into those, uh, railroad tracks. So there'll be, uh, uh, extend about a week, well, there'll be some gravel in between the, the asphalt and their tracks that they're replacing. Uh, the second project is the PRV vault installation on South Second Avenue. The contractors are scheduled to start April point four and finish April point five. The third is a booster station located on Seafaree Drive. Scheduled delivery is late April. Water show up notices along with information about the project and a map of the water outage will have been hand delivered to the affected residents. Public Works, um, had a no shot inspection visit in late February. These visits was not expected, and they're always gone. There will be a letter of corrective action once they finish the report, and your Public Works employees have a vast skill set that on any given day could include digging out creeks using heavy equipment, diagnosing electrical equipment, replacing brakes on city vehicles, installing sewer pumps that have fail, rebuilding failed pumps, making clean, safer drinking water, updating and following permits, entering confined spaces with proper permits, holding safe community meetings, require yearly training and testing for certification, cleaning public bathrooms while maintaining a good attitude, and on top of all that fun stuff, uh, they work every day of the year, including snow days. Are there any questions?
Well, I know that Caleb was, and probably that you, the whole department were disappointed that they didn't bring home any awards, but I think it's amazing that they, that they entered, and for Caleb, he's young, he's only been doing this for two years. Every time he does this, he just stretches and learns a little bit more, so I applaud him for trying, yeah.
Good question about the road repair. Are they going to do it about the oil and stuff by November, up there in several years and just give them worse than this? Um, just, just north of the, uh, Caboose.
I have, that's not part of this project. I had a comment about that.
I don't know, they were placing rail, I didn't know what part of that.
Four to North Third, they didn't tell me exactly how far, not past North Third, they said, but.
I know this is a sensitive subject, because you don't own the street, and it's another, uh, that and the diagonal parking. You showed me what you just, during some of those holes, but I know we can't do asphalt, so instead, I'll get there, and that's not our street.
Yeah, so today we did, we put, uh, well, uh, today we, we bought bags of asphalt. Uh, I was called today to repair those holes. Um, I'm not sure if they got done or not, but, uh, we got the bags today purchased for hundred dollars worth, and, uh, the diagonal parking lots, we leased those. Um, we maintain those as often as, as needed. Uh, Miller Street is not ours, but in recent past, we, uh, been fixing problems there. When, when the public calls, we let them know that it is not our responsibility, but we will fix them completely. So, yeah, that's how that. Yeah, so we usually, Miller Street, we wait for a complaint, parking lots, we try to get those ahead of time.
Uh, Dan, maybe you can explain to people that asphalt doesn't set in certain temperatures, and so sometimes you have to wait to fill a pothole
Yeah.
till the temperature rises.
That is true. Um, properly repaired potholes with pox required, there to be no water and temperature. They do have other types of temporary pop, you know, patches that do, that can be done in the water, and these bags of asphalt repair, it's one called Easy Street. It's like lean brand, and that's what we like to use, and it can be done in the winter. Now, it's, it's a little more temporary than the pox or real asphalt, but then.
My question is, Mark, it's in the beginning of the report about the speed limit change, and it might be for a little, a little bit too. So we all talked about having an ODOT study done to slow down traffic even as far as Friends Camp and at By Lake Lidle, because there was an accident and a life lost, and so we had a long discussion here and asked about a study, is that the same study that we, okay.
They went back.
What's that?
I'm pretty sure they went clear to the high schools.
Okay, and, and in my understanding, they only want to slow down to March seventh street and not at By Lake Lidle or further?
It was the Traffic Investigator recommendation that he's only going to slow it down, or, yeah, from, extend to the thirty-two or so. He tried to get it to Lake Lidle, but it wasn't the.
And when did they do that?
Uh, last, yeah, uh, I can give you the exact dates.
Well, I always wonder, because like, November is way different than July, and there, you know, and so I wondered about the timing of the study being done.
Yeah, they, they, um, I know they say they pick their best times to speed, people speed when they're available, and it's kind of, you, you, you get first. When you call for this to be done, it's, you just put in a list, so kind of slot it in when it gets you done.
So it might be something that we'll continue to work on.
I wrote them a letter.
You did?
Yes, I wrote, I wrote a little bit of a letter. I got a response. It was.
Did you?
Yes, I did get a response, but it was just sort of non-committal response. But I think it would be who, all of us as council people and the mayor to write ODOT a letter, and anyone in the audience write ODOT a letter. Uh, because the more we complain, the sooner we're gonna get that all the way out, at least to twelfth. And we really need it. When you turn into Lake Lidle in and out, that is just terrible. So I did, that's just something I will bring, bringing up, as maybe a helper solution to put pressure on ODOT to come and help us at last. We don't need another death out there on one-on-one on that same stretch of highway. We've had enough.
I do know, uh, Phil Castle made a report with a lot of photos, and he, as well, I think might be more than one, a letter to ODOT about this. I, I saw that, uh, the lady, uh, informed me that the public would write her, she let me, she CC'd me on the letter, you know, I saw it.
So it's just a heads up to everybody, and all of us as citizens have a stake in getting that piece of our highway slowed down so we don't have an accident with a school bus or something that's really serious.
If there's more we can do, please let us know.
Thank you, Superintendent Emerson. All right, the floor is yours, Senator Shepard.
I think I just have good news tonight. We have not finished the Lake Lidle Park project, uh, and, and Dan's been a lot of work on this, but, but we are, uh, we've got the preliminary weapon evaluation complete, and that's, that's been shipped off to Department of State Management, and, and we'll need that report later on, we'll go make improvements there, uh, we'll know what's a weapon, what's, what's not a weapon. And that'll be important for any permitting. Uh, in the planning commission, uh, they're part of this project, uh, they are going to be developing a concept plan for at least at a minimum of this, of many that they want to see included. And I'm working on a draft lease agreement with the city council, and, uh, we hope to get that over the county sometime in the summer, and, uh, and, and negotiate in terms of taking over operational controls of, of the lake from the county, and then making some improvements, uh, improvements out there. Our superintendent, uh, mentioned the First Street crossing improvements, Oregon Coast Seafaree Railroad will be out there Monday, and they think they're gonna finish on Friday. And, uh, most of their work is gonna be on the rails themselves and, and whatever system they need to support those rails. And then Public Works will come through after they're finished and do an overlay, asphalt overlay crossing intersection. So there might be a period in between, uh, when the asphalt plant starts up and we can get asphalt, uh, and when Seafaree Railroad is done with their portion. I think the anticipated, uh, dates for the closure of the parking lot will just be next week. Uh, there's no way around that. But hopefully we can get those opened up on Friday, uh, in time for the weekend, and I know Public Works and everything, they can't just make that happen. But it should be, uh, I mean, anything would be improved out there. Hopefully, let's, let's, uh, do a good job. We are also accepting nominations for Volunteer of the Year and Grand Marshall, uh, for the Fourth of Black Trail. You can go online to our city website, uh, come in person at City Hall to, to fill out a form to nominate somebody, and, uh, if you do, if you are awarded, uh, the honor of being Volunteer of the Year or Grand Marshall, you get to write a grade, uh, which is pretty publicly convertible. The deadline to submit nominations is May first, and that'll give the council time to, uh, uh, make those, uh, appointments in, uh, other than that, gee. Would you like to add some, uh?
No, that's just a picture of me.
Two thousand nine.
Has that been publicized in like the Tillman Pioneer News or something, so people in general know?
It's gonna be out there, um, and it's on, it's on our website, and I'm not sure exactly where else, where else it is. Um, that's, that's something our, our, uh, uh, event coordinators kind of, we're, we're getting it online, uh, as well. So anyway, council, council will, uh, will choose the winners at the big tent meeting, uh, should be exciting. Uh, Chief, as you mentioned, you prepare to spare, if anybody's interested, if fairness, uh, might be interested, uh, want some, some free, uh, uh, pill bags or other corporate items. If you need some CPR training, uh, New County High School this Saturday, eleven to two. I highly recommend, it's not high, uh, they put a lot of work into this. I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be pretty amazing. Uh, we're, uh, inching our way through our, our budget process, we had our first budget meeting last Thursday on April fifth, we have another budget meeting tomorrow, uh, right here, five PM. It's open to everybody, if you're interested in that process, uh, everyone's willing to go up to it. And I think we're gonna be on track to get a proposed budget to the council, uh, and city council to take a look at it at their big tent meeting. Uh, and, uh, John Paul mentioned this, uh, this is the fire, we have our, our, our homepage right now, uh, showing the listening session, uh, and when it is, again, April twenty-sixth, six AM. Should be a good, good get-together, um, on the San Mary Trail. And then, uh, we've got another lead for electric vehicle charging stations, uh, with interest to, uh, parking lot. This one's a federal program, and we've got a deadline of, I think it's May thirtieth to apply. Um, so these are, uh, it's a pretty neat program, these are the, the big, uh, level three, the biggest charging, get a hundred and fifty kilowatt each. Uh, so it's for four of them, that's, that's the funding level, and, uh, I've got a call with, with one of these partner programs to walk us through the, the program. Because at this point in time, I, I'm not sure that it's what we want, but I think it might, so, uh, we're gonna kind of work our way together with that. Uh, see if it's a program we want to be a part of. And then lastly, uh, the League of Oregon Cities, uh, they are having a spring conference at Seaside, which is kind of nice. It's a short drive away, and April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, uh, the mayor, myself, uh, some of the council members, uh, are going to attend, and it's a good place to network with other cities, see what's going on around the state of Oregon with other cities, see what's on the horizon, and, uh, hopefully if we work our time, we can bring back some new ideas to Rockaway. That's, that's what I have to do all night.
So I, I also want to add that not only do we network, but they have training sessions for the League of Oregon Cities will train, and I know one of the sessions is for city council about conducting efficient, uh, city council meetings, so we, we update our skills when we go through, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in public comments this evening. I have the signup sheet. Uh, did, did we have anybody join remotely that wants to, uh? No, okay. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has five minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. Uh, after I call your name, please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. Uh, the chair recognizes Jean Schultz.
Thank you. I'm Jean Schultz. Uh, I'm with, uh, three forty North St. Ray, not Ray, and I am the president of the Rockaway Beach Library. And as usual, I would like to thank you for our grant funding, uh, helping us updating the system. Uh, we have a helpless meeting system now. I want you to know that it's installed, but it was sort of neat that the, uh, it was installed right above the section in the library that's labeled science fiction. We see it's a try to screen the orders for display, and the display cases should be coming next month. We're looking forward to having both of these. We'll be using them for, uh, the information we have about local authors in their books, as well as other displays, such as those, uh, the emergency equipment that goes in them. And, uh, at this point, we have six hundred and fifty dollars left, because we estimated what we needed by using the library catalog, and when we actually called, it was a discount. So, um, we proposed, in the city council agrees, to use the six hundred and fifty dollars that we have left for staining our deck that's the entrance to the library, as well as buying some new waterproof mats to put on the, uh, walkway in, so that our patrons, so many of them are elderly, uh, can slip through. Uh, and I do want to tell you that we now have our current art display is up. It's, uh, a number of artists from the, uh, Rockaway Beach Renaissance Art Group has, uh, a new display. We have another one that we're taking out and done, and they were putting a new one up in May. And we also are talking to the art teacher at Anne County School, and he has some things that will probably be going up, uh, in June. And so we're very happy, and please come in and go through to, to browse our new park. And one other thing I want to say, when people are talking about handouts and so forth, you know, you can always bring some handouts to the library for things that you are having at the emergency meeting and so forth, especially if you put them in the form of bookmarks, it would work very well.
Thank you, Jean. All right, well, uh, thank you for being engaged in city government and sharing your thoughts and opinions. We have no old business before us, so let's move on to new business. A review of Robert's Rules of Order action on business items. Um, city code states that the procedure for council meetings shall be governed by Robert's Rules of Orders. The dooms, uh, the League of Oregon Cities recommends periodic review of common meeting procedures. Tonight, we will review the new steps needed to act on a business item, whether that's new business or old business. Public comment, motion, second, discussion, and vote. So beginning tonight, we will follow these steps. Uh, the chair will introduce the business topic. Uh, the chair will then open the public comment period on, uh, that topic. The chair will then entertain a motion, uh, that the Rockaway Beach City Council approve or disapprove, adopt or not adopt, whatever is appropriate for the business at hand. There'll then be a second. Um, a- at that point, um, the chair will repeat the motion, so it's very clear what the motion is, and will turn to the maker of the motion for their first opportunity to speak in support of the motion that they just made. Um, then, uh, others will have an opportunity to, to speak, uh, uh, in favor or against the motion. Once the discussion is completed, um, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we will then do a roll call vote on the motion, uh, and then I'll announce the results at the end of it, or the chair will announce the results, uh, at, at the end of it.
Isn't that what we do now?
No, we don't, we don't, that's not the order that we've been doing. No, we don't, we don't. That's not the order that we've been doing actually. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, and I, and I want to shout out to Councilor McGinnis, who pointed out the error of my ways, which I was really happy to have her do that because we do, I'm, I'm a big fan of Robert's Rules of Order. Any comments or questions? Okay, the approved funding for the 2022-2023 Off-Season Tourist Marketing Grants. The purpose of this grant is to assist tourism-related businesses with marketing and promotion. This grant program is funded by lodging tax collected within the city of Rockaway Beach. Thirteen eligible project applications were received for the 2022-2023 City of Rockaway Beach Tourism Marketing Grant Program. Funds are available to award all thirteen projects, so they're all can be fully funded. And a list of requests was included in your council packets. City Council has final authority to, to award on the awards. So I will now open the public comment period. And I have Jessica Hooker, who would like to speak on this item, which is 9B on your agenda.
And we have, we need to block her.
I was gonna say Amy wanted to speak.
Yeah, so she might want to make a presentation.
She's the person that does give the stuff.
Right. She didn't want to speak.
Oh.
She's here to answer.
Sorry, it's your time.
Okay, no, I didn't understand how to start my comment. Actually, I should cover 9B and 9C. I'm just gonna say it. And then maybe we'll have it or we'll get to the next one. My name is Jeanne. I'm here to be 35 more connected to the street in Rockaway as a full-time resident with my husband, and I'm middle schooler, just in time for the Fourth of July. We love rural, small town life, the glorious nature of this place, and the kind of community that we're being connected with here. For me, a big part of that has been civic involvement in coming to council meetings, the Business Association and the Chamber. I love learning about the initiatives and projects of Lake Vidal, Sandbury Trail, as well as challenges like parking, and so connects. I just recently remember there were dedicated spots for Main Street business owners, which seemed like something that I'd be able to fix and all you to address. I'm also really interested in opportunities like funding for the off-season tourism and then new summer events, such as the artisan farmers market, the Arts and Crafts Fair at the 9C front. I understand that there is $30,000 available for funding. And 11 brick-and-mortars on 101 include at the Grand River Chamber have applied for this. Seven of those applications are for signage. Six of those applications are for online, like web and social media promotion, all of which would increase visibility in real time and for those who are planning their visits online. The artisan market, Thursdays, we kick up a long weekend, provide a venue for local creatives to show their experience with the Rockaway Renaissance artists. Really a lot of time on the front. It kind of complements the other activities that are in the country. The reason I have these combined is I just wanted to say something about what I know from the world of these, I'm a sociologist, a patient of society. I've worked in marketing as my bread and butter for more than two years. And of course, in a lot of different environments, including game development industry, in that space, there was a presentation lesson stuck with me through everything, where the scholar talked about why certain things, they were going to work and others didn't. And it was about the difference between space and place. And when you create space, you have location. People come, they go, they run, they go. It doesn't really gel unless there's a host, there's a consultation, there's a sign, there's the event, the purpose. And that's what makes it a destination, makes it coherent and lasting. And that shift from space to place is represented by, I think the book explosion that I'm receiving just about 9C right now, but the signage, the website, the social media. I don't anticipate any contracts, but I got involved in these meetings because I have a passion for creativity. I care about the rest of it. And all of those are wonderful. I tried to say that as an enthusiastic resident, putting out my first voice on the podium moment.
Thank you. Did we have anybody online that wants to make a comment on this item?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, the chair will entertain a motion that the Rockaway Beach City Council take a specific action on the list of projects before you.
I still won't.
Can you be more specific about?
I, I know that we accept the list of applications for the tourism marketing grants.
Second?
I second.
It, it's been moved that the Rockaway Beach City Council approved grant funding for all projects listed in the 2022-2023 Off-Season Tourism Marketing Grants. Would you like to make any comments in favor of your motion?
I think everyone that's on this list is very worthy of having the grants.
Anything else?
I have to say, I was part of the workshops and Visiting Summit Coast came and did a presentation on our community grants one day. And Amy came back and then also pitched the sign grant. And so the signs that you see here, hopefully those businesses also asked for another grant to couple it together. And so we should see some beautiful new signs. And it was a great experience. I hope we have them back more and, and do some more stuff together.
And I, and I also want to say thank you to Amy because there was some training that was done. And I think the Chamber might have also participated in that to help. That's why we have so many good quality applicants, is because there was some training that was done. I shouldn't say applicants, applications, because, yeah.
Any other discussion? All right. Since there's no further discussion, let's record our council's vote. Council President Chief?
Yes.
Council Franken?
Yes.
Council Hayes?
Yes.
Council Martine?
Yes.
Council McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Request for use of the wayside by Rockaway Beach Chamber of Commerce and Visitors, Visitor Center.
Charles, can I ask Amy one, one question about the?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'm told that the sign requirements have been loosened up. Is that correct? Yes.
Thank you for just agreeing that, Amy. We thought a lot of great, we considered the area, it includes, we need to get back to them. Part of that process, when I came up here, we did grant offices, or part of it, we needed a listening session, specifically on the signage grant. So we went back to our board and revamped that program to now allow retail, as long as the retail can show that they have some business to them. And also allowing independent, small grocery stores, or you said grocery stores, granted, in some of the smaller, better stores. Also, it was a three-year requirement that you needed to be in business. And it came up that there's several people who purchased businesses here in the last few years. So if someone purchased a business that's been in business for years, we'll take that into consideration for that as well. They also added resources of food and contact for signage and eased up the process where you don't actually have to have your sign printed before you can apply. So it's a two-step process. You can put in your project. And then if you like your project, if you want to work together and forward, then you have, I think it's 90 days to actually get your sign printed. And that could cost less time for it to be part of the application as well. So it's a 50% reimbursement up to $10,000. So if your project is 20, you get reimbursed 10. The city of Rockaway, through this process, the sand dollar, will be given to a brand new sign where, where this grant, if you just worry, will be paid $3,000 for that $10,000 sign. I'm sure it's expensive, but also necessary. And you have to have the right funds for this environment to be able to do it. We're, we're excited to get some more applications and Christine's a great help. Spreading the word. So we should have a press release going out next week or so.
Yay.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for your flexibility. That's awesome. All right, request for use of the wayside by the Rockaway Beach Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. The Rockaway Beach Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center has submitted applications for events utilizing the wayside. Details can be found in the submitted wayside applications. There's one for Artisans' Farmers Market, Arts and Crafts Fair, Kite Festival, and Independence Day Fundraiser. Where did Jessica go? You, you, you took care of that in the previous talk, right?
I did. I can get up again and say one more thing.
You, you can have, Jess is gonna speak on 9C.
All right, totally off the cuff. Marketing is my bread and butter, but I need to be lucky with the dreams and the opportunity to potentially have a space where I could test out what it could sell would be wonderful. And I know that I'm not the only one. The Rockaway Renaissance art institute is full of people who's made their way to share the community. They're on this place at the library right now. And there really, I know there are shops that potentially could hold items that local makers make. But the ability to do that in a fair-type setting, in the outdoor and to just test very small with what works and what doesn't work is very powerful. The other piece is the Thursday, the Thursday scheduling of it, because I haven't shot the farmers market. There, number one, I don't get to shop on that in Rockaway. And we have one that's earlier than the others, that certain people are more likely to shop hours than over in other communities. And when I'm not that out, my assistant, woman, like, I don't make them, I don't have the nights that I shop for them. I don't, I don't have to. So other people are very likely to do that as well. Talking to Peanut Galleries, she's talking to you. You don't have her voting. So peanut galleries are one of them. I'm sitting with myself. So just slow down. There's one more piece about the Thursday timing. Oh yes, all the folks who come after the weekend, who come maybe Friday night or Saturday morning, might be more likely to come on Thursday night. And that's a full another 24, 48 hours of their dollars being spent in town. Thank you for mentioning that. I hope it happens. Otherwise, it's a personal thing. But I think it would be a good community benefit.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your enthusiastic support. Well, the chair will entertain a motion.
I, I make a motion that the city council approve these three applications for the, for?
There's four.
Oh, sorry.
The council, incorrect on that.
Oh, the council, correct, okay. Four applications for the use of the wayside without granting the request for waiving the bathroom cleaning.
I'm sorry, I have an issue with the Fourth of July from 1 to 4. That, that's our busiest week of the year. And I think that we be doing the city its best favor.
So this is where it gets back to, we have a second or don't have a second before we discuss?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so I'll say.
Yeah, do we, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the four applications for use of the wayside by the Rockaway Beach Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. Council McGinnis, you have the first opportunity to, oh, oh, with the removal of the waiver for the request to be waived cleaning the bathrooms.
Yeah, thank you. I do like the idea of having a market on Thursday. And Jessica, just for what you said, because maybe it'll bring tourists in a little bit earlier. I have had people approach me from, like, okay, at the hairstylist, someone approached me and said they heard about this possibility, and they wanted to know who to contact because they want to sell eggs there. So I think it's already getting some buzz. I think it'll be good for the town. The, the kite festival is an ongoing thing that we've done a lot. I am, I, I, I said without granting the Chamber's request for the cleaning of the restrooms to be waived. And I, and that's simply because we don't have time, we haven't had time to put any other plan in place. So we need to go with the plan that we have right now. And I have talked to City Manager Shepherd about perhaps a, a plan in the future. But we haven't had time to put that in place. So we'll go with that. I, Councilor Chief, I am open. So I mentioned those three. I am open to maybe an amendment on that motion about the, the Fourth of July.
Yes, I appreciate that. The rest of them, I think is, is a terrific idea. I've always been in favor of having a market. Years ago, we had a market, and Christine and I were involved in it. And I think it's really good. All the other little towns around have a market. I think we should. I, the only thing I oppose is doing it before the Fourth of July because we're so busy. The rest of the time, times that you've requested for it, I think fit in quite well.
So the application times match the Lions days?
Well, the Lions have one, one thing, and you're asking for 10, 10 to 15.
The applications are different. And if you look at the map for the Independence, the fundraiser, it's two stalls. It's not.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the same. And so really, the only difference is that the fireworks booth is in the wayside and not up beside the caboose. But that's really the only difference that there would be.
And so you're, you're asking for the two slots that are directly inside the chambers.
And, and honestly, it feels, you know, the ground was better. And, and we did that. It's been there for 40 years. It's not, we're not asking for anything.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at the back page. I apologize. But the rest of it was just fine. I do oppose having fireworks sold. Just a comment.
Also, maybe you can clarify this for me. That I understand from a couple of sources, there's trouble getting the money from the fireworks turned into the school being late. And I just, I've heard from a couple of sources, so I don't know.
Not, not to my knowledge, yeah. So the Chamber, the school that it with the Chamber, we usually pick one school to help us. And we gave them a check for $1,600.
Yeah. That's all I know. I just heard from a couple of resources that it was very late getting, several months later.
The money was in the bank for a whole time, yeah.
Anybody else have comments, questions?
I really like the idea of the artisan market. I think it's been sorely miss, missing, you know. We have to go 30, 20, 30 minutes in either direction to attend any such things.
So just for sake of simplicity, to get something passed quickly and then move on, I'm going to amend my motion to just, I make a motion that we approve the artist, and this is the reason I thought there were three. The Arts and Crafts Fair and the Artisans Market and the Kite Festival without the requests, without approving the request to have the bathroom, our restroom cleaning approved. And we need another second on that. And then my motion is to consider the fireworks as a separate motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Robert's Rule of Order, we have a motion and second. Can you then file a second motion after we've got one on the table for voting?
He seconded my amended motion.
No, but I mean, we have a motion and a second to your motion.
Yeah, you can amend.
What are the rules?
You can amend before you vote. And that, now we would vote on the amended motion.
Okay. We have a, a motion to, to the Rockaway Beach City Council approve three of the applications, the Artisan Farmers Market, the Arch and Crafts Fair, and the Kite Festival, with the stipulation that their request to remove the bathroom cleaning be waived.
Not, not be waived.
Not be waived, yes. All right, do we have a second?
I second that.
Been moving the seconded. Did you have any, any comments you want to make about your, your last motion?
Just that we're separating the different applications. I think we're good with that.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? All right, we will now take a vote on this. All right, we will now take a vote on this amended motion. Council president chief?
Yes.
Councillor Franken?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Martine?
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis?
Yes.
The amended motion passes unanimously. All right, we do have before us a request for fireworks sale. Do we have a motion for that request?
Uh, but I'm not sure what the motion would be at this point.
Or you can approve it or disapprove it. We need to take action on it.
Yeah. I'm trying to find it. Well, I think there'll probably be a lot of discussion on it, but we can't just sit here all night, so somebody has to make a motion, get it going. I I make a motion that we approve the Independence Day fundraiser without, without approving the request for the restroom cleaning to be waived for the chamber.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the request for the Independence Day fundraiser without the uh, the request for a waived bathroom cleaning stipulation. Councillor McGinnis, would you like to speak in 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 favor of your motion?
I really don't have strong opinions one way or the other, I just needed to make the motion so that we could have a discussion and move on. So basically, that's it, so I would leave, I would leave other people up to have that discussion.
Who would like to speak in favor of the motion?
Well, I will, obviously. I, basically, it just means that the fireworks trailer is in the wayside right across from the Lions instead of up in the gravel next to the caboose and close to the train. And so there gets to be a lot of people around there, and it's safer when it's right there. And it's been there for nearly forty years, but the FW started doing the fireworks, and when they quit doing it, then the chamber took it over. And so, I don't know, I don't know what the controversy around it would be. If we can't share in the wayside, then we will do it on the chamber leased property. The chamber was instrumental in redoing the wayside for the events, and so it it's kind of odd, you know, to, for it to be such a big deal. Also, we matched the other dates, the farmers market dates with the Lions dates, and so we're not asking for anything differently than what we have approved for the Lions to do.
I just disapprove of having fireworks sold, when we don't have them, they're not allowed in the city, why should we sell them? So I just disapprove of having fireworks sold, period. And to put the wagon doesn't make any difference. It's still there, and it's still selling fireworks.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of the motion?
I I have a question, because you you said something earlier about fireworks being allowed. I think when the the sheriff's deputy was making the comment, that there are a few days around Fourth of July when we do allow fireworks.
Yes, July is, this is near and dear to my heart, July first, second, third, fourth, and fifth is an exemption for the detonation of fireworks in the city of Rockaway Beach.
So by them selling it to be used during those particular days, that would be legal. I mean, they would be selling something that is, that is legal to use.
They are, if they, if they detonate them for second, third, fourth, and fifth, then we are in, they aren't doing any, they're not incenting illegal behavior, prohibited behavior.
We actually passed a resolution allowing them and the pirates to do their Black Cannon guns and things at the same time. We had to amend, we passed a resolution because we had an ordinance against it, even though the FW had done it for thirty years. And so I can say that the chamber gives out garbage bags and solve bags with every single sale. The people are given a lecture, and the, you know, we point at the dumpster, and I believe we do a really good job at advocating for cleanup, lots of people take two bags, and so unfortunately, it's one of our best fundraisers, and because we are solely supported on fundraising and membership and stuff, it's, it's how it is, and so.
Other discussion? All right, well, since there's no further discussion, let's record how councillors vote on the motion. Council president chief?
No.
Councillor Franken?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Martine?
So.
Councillor McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes three, two, two. All right, let's move on to council comments, but before that, I just want to let you know, I'm going to explore something many community members have shown an interest in, the process that led to the approval of the Anchor Street Park Event Space and Parking Project. I hope all of you will stay and hang in there until the end of the council meeting, so you can both hear what our councillors have to say, but you have a chance to hear the history of that, that project. And so, and now, council comments, the chair recognizes council president chief.
Yeah.
I think I pretty much said most of what I was gonna say early on. It's nice to be back in town.
Welcome back from Texas.
Thank you, I've been in Texas, everybody, for a week. I have a modern Texas star. Got in late last night, so I'm kind of still in jet lag, but it's good to see everybody.
One, thank you for coming, it's not easy to do that kind of travel and be up and about this time of night, so thank you for that. Councillor Franken?
Really enjoying getting indoctrinated in my new role and enjoying the process.
Good thing, thank you, councillor Hayes?
I want to commend the Public Works guys again, because they really are very special to many of us. We see how hard they're working, especially cleaning up and stuff when we have a lot of people. And so it was nice to see them there and kind of red in the face a little bit, so you can razz them really good for us, please. I don't think that some of our staff behind the scenes get the credit really that they deserve, you know, and so they work very hard in the summer. What else do I have? I, I want to explain to folks, I don't have a conflict of interest with the chamber because I don't make any money, I'm not paid in any way. And so I think you'll see more folks come forward and speak up for the chamber as relationships get better going forward. I look forward to having some small citizen committees and us all working together. I think it's really good for us, and what else? I'm really jostled about the salmonberry thing, and I think we really want to get the money that's coming in two thousand twenty-four, or when they miss the vote, and so I hope we all can really work together and and make that happen. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Hayes. Councillor Martine?
I've realized complaints, both on Facebook and emails in regards to fixing up that parking lot on Anchor Street. And what people don't understand is, we built this building here, that was part of our contract with the bank for the loan, that we had that parking lot there, that's when we purchased it. And we can't write today other than a parking lot.
Well, thank you for that.
I did not know that either.
Thank you for sharing that. Councillor Martine, what else would you like to share with us? That was a good bit of information, thank you. Well, councillor McGinnis?
Well, I also want to thank the Public Works people for their, for their promotions and their hard work. And congratulations to people who got the twenty-two, twenty-three tourism grants, it was nice to have enough money to fund all of them. And I look forward to the summer market, I, like I said, there's already buzz about it. I encourage people to go on the fifteenth to the, is it at the high school or the middle school? At the high school, for the emergency preparedness fair. And I, by the way, have it to go back, and it never leaves my car, I'm, I'm like paranoid about not being prepared. It has been a busy month, and and a lot of them are for me, as a city councillor, I attend a lot of meetings, do a lot of research, I attend meetings from everything about FEMA to, and FEMA's new regulations to, I met with the director of the Port of Tild, or Port of Gare Baldi yesterday. And one of the ways I find out about all these meetings that are relative is people in the community email me, text me, and tell me there's a meeting that I might be interested in, Bill Hassel sends me a lot of meetings. So I just want to say, please keep doing that, because I don't have a, I I'm not up in all of this, and so thank you. You can find my contact information on the city website, and please tell me everything that you think I should attend. May not attend at all, but thank you for sending it. And we really do have an engaged community, and that was really evident during the the budget committee. Just saying that at one point, the budget committee asked if they could meet throughout the year with Luke and not include the city council, and and I quickly said, no, the city council are permanent standing members of the budget committee. But I think what it showed is how deeply people want to get involved and solve problems. And so along with that, we have some committee commissions and 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 just city committees in code, and they're not all operational, some of them, like we have a tourist, tourism committee that has a job list and it's not been operational for a long time, so I would like the city council to take a look, first of all, at the ones we already have, and how can we make them better, and if they're obsolete, like maybe the tourist commission or committee or whatever, we take them out of the code and put something in that is more relevant, and and start building on different ways like that with committees and commissions, that not necessarily commissions, but committees that the public can get involved in and can work with the city council on, and the, and the city manager, because whatever they work with city council on ends up becoming work with the city manager too. Thank you.
Thank you, right. All right, mayor's report, on on March twenty-first, I posted on my mayor of Rockaway Beach Facebook site about the availability of preliminary documents for previously approved wayside improvement and anchor street projects that that was available on our Public Works webpage. A comment on my post prompted my decision to speak about the history of the Anchor Street project in tonight's mayor's report, and thank you councillor Martine for that, that additional gem that you shared with us. Well, we live in a world of infinite needs and limited resources. As such, it is incumbent upon Rockaway Beach City Council to make well-informed decisions rooted in what is in the best interest of our residents, our business owners, and our visitors to the city. We do this in a variety of ways, such as proactively seeking input from stakeholders and holding decision-making meetings that are open to the public. I also submit that the bar needs to be extremely high for going back and revisiting a previous council's decision, particularly a decision that was rooted in input from stakeholders and one made in public. If the bar isn't high, city government would be in a constant state of turmoil with no forward movement. I'll spend the remainder of my time this evening describing the decision-making history of the approved Anchor Street Park Event Space and Parking Project, a process that was rooted in stakeholder input, public comment, and open to citizen input. I don't expect to convince everyone, but simply want to get the facts on the table for all to hear. The historic record shows that the Anchor Street project is an excellent example of how, as to how projects should be identified and council decisions made. The journey of the Anchor Street project began with the Rockaway Beach Transportation Plan dated October twenty-ten. The plan can be accessed on the city of Rockaway Beach's webpage at the bottom right side of the landing page under Resources. I highly recommend that all with an interest in Rockaway Beach read the plan. Specific to my report this evening is the discussion of public involvement on page two dash one. The report states, "A project advisory committee made up of local residents, business owners, and public officials met at key milestones in October twenty-oh-nine, January twenty-ten, and April twenty-ten to provide input on the project needs, existing and future needs, existing and future conditions, possible transportation improvements, and to recommend project improvements. Two public open houses were held at the Rockaway Beach Civic Center, February and April of twenty-ten, that allowed substantial input and feedback from the community. The first meeting collected input on the deficiencies and needs, and gathered comments on the concepts under consideration and new ideas to be considered. The final open house presented the draft project recommendations for public review and comment. I suggest that this is an excellent example of how to have conversations with our community in making recommendations for projects, a model that Rockaway Beach should replicate going forward, and I think our salmonberry project is a good example of how we're engaging with the community. On page three dash eight, you will find the discussion on improved parking with item seventy stating, "A new city-maintained parking area currently exists behind and north of City Hall. This recommendation implements the current paving and striping plan for the parking area and adds signage on the highway advertising it is available for use. Due to its location in the downtown core with proximity to shops, restaurants, and the beach, this parking area could easily accommodate visitor day use. I might note that we now have the Rockaway Roastery in that area, and we're soon going to have a sports bar in that area, which is already driving additional need for parking for those two, two motions. This project was added to the transportation plan with an impressive level of citizen involvement. The next phase of the Anchor Street project's journey began at the November tenth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting under New Business, preliminary discussion on goal-setting for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget year. During the discussion, council asked for, among other items, more parking and more restrooms. City manager Shepherd committed to bringing a summary for further discussion to the next meeting. At the December eighth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting under Old Business, continued discussion on goal-setting for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget year. Council continued their discussion of goals, and city manager committed to bringing the refined list with estimates to the February council meeting. At the February ninth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting under Old Business, approval of administrative task list twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three on the administrative task list was the following, "Development of Anchor Street lot with paved parking, lights, restrooms, info, kiosk, and other amenities." The administrative task list passed unanimously, one councillor had an excused absence. So at this point, we've had three meetings talking about this with the opportunity for public input, and it was all rooted back in a, in a, in a transportation plan from twenty-ten. Further to this, city manager Shepherd presented the concept plan for Anchor Street at the August twenty-twenty-two council meeting. City council did not request further review, so the plan was sent to the engineers for design. The Rockaway Beach Transportation Plan addressed key issues related to transportation within the city of Rockaway Beach, including parking for visitors. The plan was built from the bottom up as it should have. The Anchor Street project was approved over the course of three city council meetings, meetings that were public with opportunity for those who chose to attend to provide input. I submit that the approval of this, this project was a well-informed decision rooted in what is in the best interest of our residents, our business owners, and visitors to our city, and there is no compelling reason to revisit this decision, this decision. I am committed to giving our citizens opportunities to provide input on city projects, to have in community conversations, and being transparent about new projects. Thank you for your time and attention. Do we have any other council comments?
So Cheryl, can I give a little bit of inspiration, something?
No, that's not what this time is for, if you'd like to come to the next meeting and and make comments at the, at the public comment section from then again. Thank you. All right, I will have a motion to adjourn.
I I make a motion to adjourn.
I second. I second, it's been moved and seconded, we'll record how councillors vote. Name the councillors, councillor president chief?
Yes.
Councillor Franken?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Martine?
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis?
Yes.
Count, that's it. We're adjourned at seven fifty-five on Wednesday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.